Is that on? There he is. Okay, no worries. A host.
A host.
Recording in progress.
This meeting is being recorded.
Josh needs to fix something over there. All right, we're good to go. Okay. I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees, meeting to order on Monday, June 6th. We are holding this meeting as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we have both folks here in the village hall as well as a number of people on Zoom. And there's also a call-in number, the Zoom link is at the top of the agenda, and the call-in number is also at the top of the agenda with a meeting ID on there as well. We have a quorum, and the agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. So if there is anybody from the public who would like to speak, we ask that you share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments in no more than three minutes, in case we have a number of people who would like to speak. So with that, I will be quiet. Anybody in the audience or on Zoom, please let us know if you want to speak. All right, then we'll move to item five, discussing, consider the meeting minutes from our regular village board meeting held on May 16th, and a special village board of trustees meeting held on May 31st. Any questions, comments, edits, or consideration for motion?
I'll make a motion to prove the minutes as presented.
All right, thank you, Heidi. Is there a second? Sarah? Motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
I am.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Assuming Chris was...
Chris is ahead.
Yeah, he chimed in there too. Next up, if the board is okay, I'd like to move the swearing-in of Officer Robert Gilmore to the next item and have Lisa do her piece, please. With that, Officer Gilmore, get to work.
I'll take the call.
Yeah. All right. Next, we'll move then to unfinished business, item six, and this is discussing, consider leafback purchase for 2024 with ARPA funds. There's some attachments in the packet, and so, Melissa, I'll let you go through the memory you put together.
Thanks, John. And I'm bringing this forward again. We did have some discussion earlier in the year, and basically, now that kind of the ARPA funds seem to be up in question again as to what we're using them for, because some of the projects have changed, I think it's good to have another discussion about this. The longer that we wait to purchase a vehicle, the more it's going to cost, and the longer it's going to take to get. So that's why I brought it forward now. I realize that the budget process is coming up in a few months, however, the more we put this off, the longer it's just going to take. I mean, right now, we're probably looking at 2024 for sure before we get the vehicle. A few months ago, it was like 18 to 19 months, and now things are longer from my understanding. So I just thought it would be good for us to have a discussion about whether we want to proceed with this now or not. JJ, did you have anything to add?
Not really, I think it's all covered in there. If anybody has any specific questions, I think Bill Bemo's captured everything I had, and the right projects have been from back in December, so. Yep, that's all that's in there for the questions.
Thank you.
I think when we talked about this last, we talked about in January, we talked about whether or not the service should be added first and then decide how we're going to fund it. The other thing I want to discuss really is, are there different options for this vehicle, beings that we're looking to reduce our emissions over time? Is there an electric version of this particular truck available out there? Have we investigated that for something like this? Because it really is going to run six months, seven months out of the year, every day of the week throughout the village. So it's going to be a big polluter when we're trying to look to reduce our emissions. The other thing, obviously, this comes with a person too, that we'll have to continue to fund over time, and looking at the five-year plan, we're pushing up against the levy for the next five years, pretty close. So we got a lot of other asks coming through the priority process. I know that the board has got a lot of folks interested in the library, for instance, and the library is looking for additional investment. That would be also something we ought to consider, as well as certainly additional paramedics and the study there. We've got just a whole host of things that I think need to be really discussed in the prioritization plan along with this, to see where this flushes out.
And JJ, is that something that you've looked into further about an electric vehicle? Or I know that there's kind of been other municipalities that have worked on getting these vehicles and have, you're looking at where there's like an attachment or something to a vehicle. Have you had an opportunity to look any more into that?
Well, not specifically electric, but my guess is, John, like there's the technology is not there for the side chassis. We need kind of similar to the conversation we had around the truck trucker and so we buy a diesel, for instance, but I think the size of a truck chassis we need here is going to be a lot like other small trucks. I don't know that there's going to be an electric version attached to it. And yeah, Melissa, you're right, in fact, when I was looking into this more, it did seem that the options with a, like a day hook, you can actually find another use for the truck in the off season. If it pulls something back in the trunk and that, and a small spring, then you have another thing for inside other things. So that'd be around, like we got the message, of course, if they want to go with the feedback, something that we can use around.
So biodiesel is an option or no?
Biodiesel is one, we haven't looked into too close to the act, but it's really, and it's not really green or, you know, electric or hydrogen, but it's an option in that outlet for the largest traditional, you know, power vehicles, but I don't think that there's going to be a really clean model yet for it.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I'm wondering if, so I agree that the environmental concerns about the truck, I wonder, I'm thinking, JJ, there's probably not, but is there a way to calculate how many cars are going back and forth to the compost pile to dump their own leaves? I'm just thinking, would it offset any of those trips as far as the environmental impact it would have?
I think actually it would be scientifically sound, but I'd probably come up with a, I think I've looked at it, but I didn't figure out what it was, yeah.
Yeah.
That's calculated every mile to its own. I think that's something we, probably got some kind of doing there.
I'm just curious, I don't need you to spend a whole lot of time doing it. And then I am wondering, is there any data that talks about, that quantifies how much phosphorus we would save, or that would not go into the water? Or is there anything like for every dump of leaves or something that we can look to for that kind of data?
I think, not sure whether we need to work on possible credits or boards or collection and, but even then, there's definitely how to use the scientific, how somebody manages leaves on their property might differ. If they have the opportunity to bring them, that doesn't, they had that opportunity to pour, get them to jump, and then they were going to jump in the sewers and into waterways. You know, to try to insert most of the mulch on their property, you know, things like compost and things around their property. So if somebody really, really got a system for that on their property, and they're pulling them out of the gutters, they're not going to contribute any, whereas if they had the opportunity to raise them to the edge and get them, I guess it's really do on all the respective, it could be hard to get, I guess, probably, to do that.
That's it, I thought I had two questions.
I had a couple of questions, too. I was wondering, JJ, how much staff time goes into maintaining the compost drop-off area in the fall?
In the fall, it's, especially Monday, when, you know, there's always that one weekend where they all come down. It's two or three staff members month of the day when we get done, so those days when they're full and overflowing. At this time of year, it's really not much. A few hours will be for a couple of days in the future. They can dump and clean up largely on a Friday, in the summer, and take whatever yard works open to them. But yeah, a few times in the fall, it's definitely, yeah.
But the time to operate the machine would be significantly more?
Yeah. When I'm looking at this over the years, when it comes up with this, as we've already talked about, is that once that first wheel drops, you raise the staff member until the snow flies, and then once the snow is on, that's when the staff member will be out in the evening for quite a while.
And there was, I know it's a little ahead of budget time in staff proposals, but there was going to be one staff member potentially proposed for next year, and this would up it to two, or do you, can you look into your crystal ball and tell me what you think, how this might change that?
Through all this process, from Public Works Committee to Budget to Matt to the board, I mean, we can take as many things as the board to try and think for, and deal with it. So, but I guess I would envision if there was going to be one, a lead truck partner in that, and I know I've always been on board for a short time, and we've experienced, we had a free conversation over the last day, the R and D, and to look at the best job, a person coming in, a fat as a mother. I guess I would say one slot, I guess.
But if the lead time is that long, then it'd really be 2024?
Yeah, yep.
I guess my only other comment on that is the educational component, we talked about this a little bit at sustainability too, so people don't rake their leaves into the gutter, and then it's like even worse, because you have these giant piles just like sitting in the gutter waiting to be picked up, that they're like on the side until a day comes to pick up, or, you know, so you aren't making the problem worse than if the leaves were just on your yard. Although I do see some people raking their leaves to the edge, and we don't do that, so it's already, and people think that we have a leafback already or something, I'm not sure. Or if they rake them there to put them in their car and take them, I don't know, but educational component is important to that, too.
Yep, absolutely.
So, could you just walk us through what happens once someone drops something off at the compost site?
Basically, when, when staff, when it's full, they, you know, a Friday, three months, we'll, we'll run to our dump dock, they currently still with two hundred, they're accepting a compost, or it's really that huge part of the trip, and they, they work them in their yard, to really do the compost, presumably having a structure for that, for that, to handle it. They, they leave, and now we got a really big price per.
And with a leafback truck, would that leafback just then go directly to the hardware there? That would go to the compost site?
My thought would be, depending on the box size again, and if it goes with the truck, yeah, cut out that field, yeah.
So I got a question then, would we take away those compost areas if we have a leafback?
I will do whatever the board wants, but we'd probably be here about it.
I think you would.
Yeah. I don't think you're ever going to want to ditch later, because hundreds of residents got, I know myself personally, I never put brush out or leaves out, I did, and I don't think on my property here, I think it's decided that they have to, so.
We'd still need it for grass, just, but...
Yep.
I have a question. Man, I think this is to you. We have around just under 750K, right, in ARPA funds? How much are the radios? Assuming that, let's make an assumption that the fire department and EMS don't get the grants, although we're hopeful. Let's assume we don't. Do we, I was looking through my notes, I don't see the calculations, how much those are in, all in for the radios. I'm trying to, you know, $747,000 minus the radios, what do we have left to pay for a leaf truck?
I don't have the radio figures in front of me, but it would be sixty, we'd be responsible for 63% or so for fire and 54% or so for, do you remember EMS? I don't know if anyone remembers. It was about, it was six figures, I think, for, I mean, six figures for each of them, I think.
Back of the napkin, Eric, I'm not going to hold you to this, but somewhere at 200K or less, right? Probably fair, fair guess? Low 100, okay, cool.
So we're probably responsible between both services for around 100,000.
Okay.
Our request is going to be 33.5.
Okay.
If you have more radios than you do, the percentage, I can see that.
I think you're right, I think it's, let's figure 125, just to be fair. Right? Okay. Just working with the fire department and seeing quotes for machinery, JJ, do we, do we still, how confident or non-confident do you feel in that 300 to 400,000 range right now, knowing that prices just keep going up?
This is going up, it's a lot of the times, the leafback, I, but you're, maybe you're probably not really counting necessarily the timeline for 100,000.
Well, the timeline, I could, 24 months seems reasonable, if not longer at this point. I guess I'm just concerned about, like, $600,000 would not be a shock to me, is that, like, for that truck being, just back in December, was 300 to 400, if it was 600 now, so. Again, I agree with you, John, that like, we have a lot of things on our plate, and you only have so much to go around, but at the same point, these things are only going to get more expensive. And we continue to hear from people, like, they absolutely want a leaf truck. Cindy, would you like a leaf truck?
She'd like a library, actually.
Yeah, she'd like both. But I'm just, sorry to call you out, but I'm just saying that I think, just, and again, with all the things on our plate, I just, and prices just continue to go up, and you're looking at 24 months minimum to get the truck, that it's, at least you know the train's coming down the tracks two years in advance, like, it's something we can address, but it's just rock and a hard place, and with the prices continuing to go up, I just can't, it's hard to say no, knowing what prices are doing.
Remember, you got a person with that, you got maintenance, and you got to replace it. Once you bring it, as he just said, you don't get it back. And we have all these other things that are coming our way, we have additional EMF staff that are coming our way. We have two coming on board now, plan, I think, is two more next year at least, in order to get to where that facility tour, or the surveys, excuse me, the consultants told us where we should be in order to support that. So I'm just saying, we probably should hold off on all of this until we find out what they ask us from the library, what the priorities are, what the additional staff is needed for EMS, fires, needs, et cetera, before we go out and do this. It wasn't a priority with Public Works, it wasn't a priority with utilities, and it wasn't a priority with sustainability, it was only a priority for plant commission. There were other things on that list. We could jumpstart with sandpaper, putting a sewer pipe in. That's economics, that's going to help you get closer to something big like a library.
It's also about providing services and amenities to our residents, and to allow them to want to stay in our community, and to bring residents to our community, too. And, I mean, I certainly understand about using funds for services, or for a sewer pipe, or stormwater pipe, but it's also, people have been asking for a leafback truck for, since I've been on the board, since before I was on the board, and our trees are only going to continue to get older, and we're going to have older neighborhoods in our community, too, and prices are just going to continue to increase. I think having the two-year lead time, we all know we need more staff regardless. The facilities tour, I mean, that showed us how far behind we are with other communities. So I think this is one way that will help us to also get more staff, and provide services that we, that our residents are asking for. And the, I mean, other communities that are smaller than us provide these services, we're kind of behind in the times in that, and, and I feel like we can figure things out, we have enough years to figure it out, and make, make all the pieces work and fit. So that's why I'm supportive of having our Public Works Director, JJ, look into this further and see what the actual costs are, and bringing it back for us to approve, to move forward with it.
Eric, you're not on the board, but...
I know, I obviously have a little bit of recent vehicle purchasing experience, I'm still on the board. A couple of suggestions.
Chief, please go ahead. No one can hear you on the, on the Zoom.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say anything in support or against the leafback, but things to consider are, do you have to take delivery of the leafback to be able to use ARPA funds before the use period ends? And then, secondly, does it cost you anything to get in line to at least have the vehicle available? Certainly, when the time comes up to physically take the vehicle, if you decide not to take it, there's going to be someone in line after you, and you're not going to have to worry about any penalties in regard to that, but if you don't get into line right now, the line will exponentially lengthen. Just a couple of my experiences with recent vehicle purchases.
Thank you, Chief. That's a good point, too.
Doesn't cost you anything to get in line.
And then it could secure the price, too, at 2022 prices.
He's shaking his head, no, it doesn't.
No, that won't...
They're not going to lock in a price. Any surcharges that might occur over the length of the contract, you will be responsible for. So if your price is $5 now, and they raise the price to $20 in two years, you're paying the $20, because you're signing that part out of the contract.
And what I'm saying is, we should have this discussion with, in conjunction with the priorities, to see if this is the one that floats to the top. Because again, we have a lot of things going on, and this is just one of them. You know, again, it wasn't on the priorities list last year, other things there are on the priority list, but maybe it floats again to the top this year. I don't know. But you're going to, it's going to cost you a maintenance and a person perpetuity, plus replacing it. You put a sewer pipe in the ground, it doesn't cost you anything for 50 years, plus you get all the economic benefits of that development. Just an example, there's other things that could be, it could be an investment in the library, continuing that, it could be anything else, but you got to see what that is, can't stack this up right now and just say, we got to get in line, because again, maybe we're going to have alternatives, maybe people want to choose to compost more, I don't know, maybe we're going to mulch more. Maybe we're going to mulch more. Who knows? There's a lot of other options, options here. And I'm telling you right now, we pulled out the library and the building, buildings from last year's five-year plan. They're not in five-year forecast and we're running their problems. We're going to have to have some really challenging conversations as a board coming up. And if you continue to add services or add something else, it takes away from something else. It's the way it works. Unless, of course, we can develop our way out of this, which I hope we can. But that means closing tits and getting stuff done.
So if we don't use the, all of the money, let's pretend we have to pay for the radios. We still are going to have some ARPA funds. Madam, my understanding, right, in these two other projects that we had kind of prioritized, the Thaden Pond one is, we're still going to have to do it.
No, that's off the table.
Can't do that anymore.
Can't do that anymore, so that one.
Not, not as Thaden Pond, but as a, I mean, there's others, there's going to be another storm, regional stormwater pond that it could go towards.
That the ARPA money could be used for?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the farm, uh.
Interceptor.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I'm sorry, interceptor.
So the farm.
Everything runs down Southern Grange right now, so at some point that pipe's full.
Yeah, you're getting close to capacity over there, so the relief to that interceptor is through the farm, Farm Golf Course area.
And we technically could look into even expanding on these if the board would want to, because the, that's how we were able to pay for the, the radios, the, the ruling that opened up. Initially, we had this on water, sewer, um, storm sewer broadband. There were a series of things and I think a lot of communities nationwide were having trouble deciding on those. So they expanded it to include basically anything that would involve, you know, basically that you consider, that you had a revenue loss, which opens you up to use the funds almost, almost any way, as long as, you know, Baker Tilly recommended that we don't put it towards, you know, operating, operating costs, because that becomes a continual, so focusing on capital.
I mean, as far as the projects that have been, we can't do Thaden anymore. We know that the interceptor, you know, ultimately if the farm, if the subdivision gets built, right? We know we have to do the interceptor at some point, right? But help me understand if, if that subdivision gets started, the developer would have to contribute to that building of that interceptor?
They would, but it's a larger pipe and that's why it's an interceptor. It's, and it's deep in the ground, which is why the utilities helped put the other end of it down violence to help spark that development. Because they weren't moving that land at all.
So, so it'll be, it'll be oversized so that they would pay whatever the, the normal size pipe that a developer would have to pay. And because we, we need to oversize it for, um, the utility's operations, then, um, we would be responsible for. So we make the pipe bigger?
We make the pipe bigger, yeah.
The difference, right, I think.
I mean, it, you know, it, in terms of projects that have been brought, at least from my perspective, is the radio's made sense, right? So we can take that, there's 125 off the top. Now we have, you know, a, I'll do the math. $622,000 to play with, right? And so we can either buy a leaf truck. Let's say it's half a million, right? So that still leaves 120 grand. I mean, how, I'm just trying to think back to the napkin here. How much bigger can you make the pipe on the interceptor with 120 grand? Is it even like, I'm just trying to, trying to think of a compromise here, right? Because I've knocked on enough doors that people want this. This is something that, that, that they want. And it's, and it's ARPA funds that are paying for the truck. So really, what's coming out of our pocket is the manpower, right? That's, that's the, the dollars in sense that we have to pitch into this project, right? But I just, in terms of projects to use the ARPA funds beyond the radios and the leaf fact, I'm, like, I'm just not feeling a ton of incentive for, for these other projects. And maybe that's just my, my lack of understanding of the interceptor project. And the Thaden Park sounded like a good one, but that Mother Nature had other plans on that one, right? So I'm just, I'm trying to come up with a, a good incentive to, to think of other projects to do beyond the leaf fact and the radios.
That's what the man's proposing, because it's opened up since we had that initial discussion. Since then, what else is out there? At what point is Southern Grange going to be full? When do we run the risk? Are we, we're already at risk?
You're already at risk. Yeah, you're already at somewhat of a risk. You know, you're running pretty full, the last time I was flow monitored. As you continue to add up in that section to the north, that's just going to continue to compound onto that. So as West Lawn develops and as, you know, the, the Hey Dudes or. Hey Day, couldn't think of the name. Hey Dudes, I think that's a shoe maybe. Uh, as Hey Day develops by the school, you know, that's going to add to it. Obviously Shady Grove's going to add to it. So as all that kind of builds out, you're just going to compound it. So I know JJ, you've, you've kind of looked at this a little bit too, and, and his thought initially was, hey, we need to move forward and get that interceptor now, right? And then have the developers pay their share of it in, in the future. And then it was kind of a little bit of a pause when someone purchased the farm property. We just don't know at this point now when they're actually going to develop. It sounds like, um, they're going to farm it potentially for a year or two and then kind of make some decisions on it, so.
And help me understand, the interceptor is in the financial management plan? As, as I'm reading here on the memo, or it's not in the financial management plan? Um, JJ, I don't, okay, go ahead, JJ.
That was a, you know, your thoughts, though, with the, um, that you currently, your entirely, you were correct.
I didn't hear.
It, it, it's a sewer project, it's, it's not general fund, so it's not part of the tax levy, part of what we discuss in the financial management plan. Even though there's some things that, um, generally what we're discussing in the financial management plan are items that will impact the tax levy. Otherwise, the, um, utility commissions looking at, at those costs.
So.
Still got to borrow from it though.
So I just need to simply yes or no. Is it, it's not, I'm hearing it's not in the financial.
No.
Okay, cool, thank you.
No.
Okay. So, I mean, sewer's important, right? I just, I'm trying to, and, and then, you know, as you said, like, there's other options here for more projects, right? So like, you know, I, I'm not in a huge rush, although it's, these things get more expensive as the, as the hours tick off, right? But it's like, with what's in front of me, like, that seemed, like, the, the leaf fact truck seems like the most viable. But we also have to, you know, people got to flush the toilet, so, um, I don't know.
The interceptor would never be part of the financial management plan, right?
Yeah. But it, it's a project that has to be done, though.
But it's also not ever going to be one of our top priorities. I mean, it's never, I mean, if we're arguing about what, what our priorities are, it's never been on the priority list either by any village board member. So, I mean, it is important, but according to this memo, it's only low to medium. I mean.
But in that memo, the leaf truck isn't in there.
And if we've, we've already budgeted for it, though? Is that what?
No.
It's from the, so, but why is this coming up now, though, if it's so important?
It's, Melissa's always been on the list, but the expectation was that we'd have a development there by now. And it keeps developing and flowing through Southern Grange. And this pipe has not been put in. The system is designed to have this pipe in there. And it's a big pipe. System is not designed to have it all flowing down Southern Grange. And we're at risk. That's why Public Works put that as a priority. Utilities put it as a priority when it came to ARPA funds. That's why. So it, it has been discussed at those two areas.
And we're doing it, we're doing a sewer and water study right now, too, to kind of point out a lot of these priorities. And that will be, that, that will be one of them, for sure.
I guess I'm with you, like, I mean, I was, I was here when, when JJ, when you presented this, this memo. And this, this is the first I'm hearing, right? Like, Southern Grange is a, is a problem, right? Like, I didn't hear about it defined as a problem back then. It just, something to keep an eye on, right? And now it's a problem, so what changed?
Development.
Yeah, but this memo was December 29th.
Again, on that memo, there is no leaf truck. This is a priority versus the leaf truck. See what I'm, see what I'm saying?
I'm kind of on a tangent here, right? Like, I'm, I'm just talking about the interceptor, just hearing that Southern Grange is now a problem, but it, I don't, I didn't remember it being quantified as a, as a problem back in December.
Public Works has been talking about it for years, so is utilities.
I don't know, so do you want to clarify, Josh? I mean, I don't know if it's a problem as in like, there's.
No, I don't think it's like.
There's a spectrum of risk. It's on there somewhere.
We're pushing it up.
It flows very full.
JJ and, JJ and Josh aren't coming to me and telling me it's in any kind of emergency or, or anything like that.
There's going to be a point where you're going to have to stop development until you.
Correct.
Check it off the list.
I guess for me, the semantics are important. I wasn't on those committees, right? So this is the first I'm hearing of it. And so I'm just trying to, in, in a layman's terms, right, understand what the risk is, right? Like, is it, are we talking about months, years, decades? It all, and you're, you're responsible, it all depends on how much building, more building, how many more people you bring.
Right. Yep.
Chicken or the egg, right? But I, I don't know. There's a lot of things coming at me at once and I only have so many hands to handle all the problems, right? So I, I don't know.
Um, just on a, from the utility commission side and some of the conversations we have, you can ask some of those commission members. We've been talking about the farm interceptor for a very long time, which we have. And we've been doing a lot of infill development currently and those have a smaller impact on, well, they have a large impact on the system, but, um, you're not running new pipes or something to those. So all the impact fees then go into our reserves to work on capital projects. So part of this study is looking at what capital projects the system needs to do and then the funding for that and look at our rates and our impact fees to see if they'll pay for those. So to, I feel like it's a little early to definitely flag ARPA for that when maybe we have funds due to impact fees, due to this higher density development that pays into that fund to do those capital improvements, you know, that we may have enough, but there's not like quite enough information yet to figure out what capital projects we need to do from the sewer fund and what those funds look like and how our rates will change. Although rates are going up through MMSD, so to increase rates to do capital projects, in addition to MMSD rates going up, might be, you know, it might cause a huge jump in rates for citizens. So I feel like there's not enough information for the farm interceptor. I don't know if that's.
I would agree. I would agree, Heidi. I think we're a few months away from actually truly understanding some of that.
So why would we commit, if we may need ARPA funds, buying a leaf truck now versus then we found out later we need ARPA funds to do the interceptor? I think, is that where you're going or?
Yeah, I think it's too early to flag that we need ARPA funds for the interceptor, I guess.
So.
I'm, yeah. I don't know if that's, it's not saying that we shouldn't use it on something else, because we could raise rates to pay for this also. Like, there are other ways to pay for the interceptor too.
I want to make a motion, but I'm trying to word it in my head. I'll make a motion that the Director of Public Works procures no less than two quotes for a leafback truck as well as does the research to understand if we have an appropriate level of funds to fund the interceptor project and report back at a future board meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye. Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Next up, we have item 7B. This is discuss and consider liquor license applications for the upcoming year, July 2020 through June 2023, from the attached list, which was in our packet.
Um, yeah, so the background checks have been done. Chief Labor did the walkthroughs on them. The only thing that I want to point out is you will notice that Dollar General is not on this list. Well, actually, they're on this list, oh, no, the one that's in the packet, they are not on the list. Because they did not get their application in on time. We just received it on Friday and that needs to be held 15 days and then also published in a class three notice before the board can act upon it. So, um, they're, they will not have an alcohol license come the July 1st renewal and they are aware of that. They will need to pull their alcohol from their shelves in the meantime. So just wanted to point that out.
Between, they have a license till the end of June.
They have a license until June 30th.
Yes, okay. So anytime after that, before it gets approved by the board.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
But they did get their application back for cigarettes.
They did, because that came in and it does not need a, a background check. It doesn't need the publications like the alcohol license. So that is, will be approved, potentially.
All right, any questions, comments from board members, albeit without clarification?
Make a motion to approve the liquor license applications for licensing year July 2022 through June 2023 for the attached list.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody, thank you, Chris. Anybody opposed? No, it's all right, we got a little delay, it's fine. I just had to remember that I got to wait for you. Any, uh, any abstentions? Motion carries. Next up is discuss and consider the amusement device permits, applications for licensing year July 2022 through June 2023. And again, the attached list within our packets. Any clarifications with this?
No clarification.
Okay. Okay.
I have a quick question, actually, on this one. Is this where, um, some of those scratch off cards would come in at restaurants or no?
No.
Okay, that's different amusement.
Button pushers.
It's button pushing, okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the amusement device permit application for licensing year July 2022 to June 2023 for the attached list.
Is there a second?
I'll second. And I do have just one question, I just thought of it. Is there a limit to how many of these we can have for, uh, population?
There is no.
Okay, unlike liquor licenses, those have a limit.
Right.
Okay.
For the class B license.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody, in favor, Chris?
Aye, yes.
All right, sorry. I'm going to get it this third time. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next up, item D then, discuss and consider the tobacco license applications for licensing year July 2022 through June 2023. Again, the attached list within our packets. Any clarifications with this, Lisa?
There is none.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the tobacco license applications for licensing year July 2022 through June 2023 for the attached list.
All right, thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Next up, item E, discuss and consider gender inclusion restroom signage and policy. So there is some information in the packet there. Anyone to jump in on this one?
Sure. Thank you, John. I included this in the packet and I appreciate it being on the agenda this evening, especially with it being Pride Month. And I'd just like to read the memo because it is so important to the LGBTQI plus community regarding gender inclusive restrooms. As the Village of Cottage Grove continues to make. As the Village of Cottage Grove continues to make strides in making our community and workplace more inclusive and accessible, it is critical to acknowledge that members of the community or workplace, including members of the LGBTQI-plus community, may feel uncomfortable using village facilities due to the limited numbers of single-stall, gender-neutral bathrooms. Having to use a single-stall bathroom that is labeled as only for physically disabled or for families can inadvertently out a person or cause them distress or anxiety. Research has shown that only 37% of transgender people feel comfortable using public restrooms. It is well documented that there is prevalence of discrimination, harassment, physical attacks, and sexual assaults against transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming individuals or those perceived as such, both in places of public accommodation as well as in restrooms segregated by sex or gender. The Trevor Projects research has found that LGBT youth who reported having at least one LGBT-affirming space had 35% reduced odds of reporting a suicide attempt in the past year. Having support from the community will impact our LGBT community positively. No matter whether they are youth or adults, visitors or workers, having gender-inclusive bathrooms is a first step in affirming that we see the LGBT community, and we are supportive. This small change in our policies can make a huge difference in the lives of our LGBT community. Our village facilities that have single-stall restrooms should be relabeled as gender-inclusive restrooms. While creating single-stall facilities with individual toilets and sinks is ideal, the village should take the initial step of relabeling existing single-stall facilities to be gender-neutral, gender-inclusive, with a commitment to include single-stall, gender-inclusive bathrooms in any newly constructed village facilities. And, um, I would just like to note that I, I have some people in my life that are close to me who are transgender, and, um, it, it is a struggle when we are in public spaces that don't have separate restrooms or that have labels that, that maybe aren't, um, as welcoming for anybody to use them as, as they could. So I, I know that some of our facilities do have single-stall restrooms, and for them to be relabeled would be a positive step forward and, um, it would be a positive step in, in showing that, that there are spaces for, for our LGBT community in our, in our community. And so with that, um, my recommendation was, is that to the extent possible that we start by relabeling the existing single-stall bathrooms in our village facilities and at our parks to have gender-inclusive restroom signage, and moving forward that the policy of the village be to include single-stall, gender-inclusive restrooms on properties owned and operated by the village while also being compliant with building codes, which, um, according to my research, apparently you have to have a specific number of gender-specified restrooms.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I would love to make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Thanks, Sarah. Any further discussion on this?
I'm just wondering how many bathrooms that we will relabel.
Back in for sure, I think.
And there is a staff bathroom in Village Hall that is a single-stall for the workers, for our staff.
Otherwise, it'd be anything new, obviously, as we're putting together this. I'm not aware of any other ones, though. J.J., you, or Matt, or anybody else on the board? I don't know others.
Is there any at the police station?
Oh, that's right, there is, because we saw on tour. Couple of single units there. Yeah. Okay, so we got a few to, to go after.
I can, I can help you with the signage.
All right, we have a motion and second, then. Any further discussion? I was going to volunteer for the signage. That's good, thank you. All right, with that, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chris, we got you. Uh, anybody opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. Uh, next up is to discuss and consider rescheduling if possible or canceling our July 4th board meeting, which ends up to be on that particular day. Are we going to be pressed for items, Matt, that you're aware of? That we need to look at?
It's always hard to say.
Yeah.
We could, we could look to tentatively schedule for the 5th, and then if the board wanted to authorize John and I to make that call. If we need to meet, we will. If not, if there's only a couple action items and nothing that's urgent, we can, we can wait for the second meeting in July. Or we could all just for sure plan to meet on the 5th. We'll definitely have agenda items. It's kind of up to, up to everybody.
How many will be on vacation that week? That's the other, all right. Okay, so we got two already. Just say no, okay? Don't upset the family by doing that. So the 5th, just getting a quorum, then we just need to make sure if we do put that penciled in that we'll have a quorum, but with two out already, as long as that's all we have, then we can still plan if there's something pressing. Otherwise, we'll just put it to the next meeting unless somebody has concerns.
Does the CDA still need the second one, Ben?
Yes.
Yes. Video. All right, board members, okay with that? This is a, don't reschedule your booking, David. You shouldn't even be looking at it, just you're, you're not here.
Well, I'll make a motion that we tentatively schedule for July 5th at 6:30, but we'll defer to the President and Administrator to decide if it's pressing or if we can cancel it as we get closer.
Second?
Motion and second, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Melissa. To schedule it on the 5th tentatively, if we don't need it, then we'll cancel it. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
Aye. I think he said aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. All right. Next up, then, we have, uh, reports from village boards, commissions, and committees, starting off with Pure Court, and that's you, David.
Yep, we met on May 17th. Uh, it was a quick meeting. Uh, it was Mark, Claudia, and I. Briar Patch just had one open case. All the, all other cases have been successfully closed. Uh, Claudia went to training in Boston, was a really good success, and they actually used Briar Patch as a, kind of a case study or an example of what other municipalities should do. Um, Claudia was also involved in Menona Grove's strategic planning efforts recently. Um, we continue to talk about auto thefts. Um, so Claudia's going to put together a draft of a prevention guide, and then we're going to determine what to do from there, be it either town hall meeting, an office hour or something, or maybe a handful of different things. But ultimately, just trying to bring more awareness to, um, the public as to the whys, hows, whens, and all those, uh, things around the auto thefts, and just bring more awareness. Uh, next meeting will be Thursday, July 21st, and the meeting lasted 15 minutes.
Efficient meeting. All right, uh, any questions for David? Otherwise, we'll move right then to the library board. David, you're next. In this, we have a discuss and consider here, too, as well.
We do, and we can try to get to my notes. Be with me here. So yes, we met, uh, the next day, uh, May 18th. Uh, I was actually remote. Uh, we talked about, uh, updates on the financial feasibility study. Uh, we talked about, um, the committee divvied up local library lists and kind of coordinated visits, or at least for people to go out and visit. Um, we then looked at a list of architects. Uh, we talked a lot about, uh, the book Dropbox. Um, that was kind of an interesting side note there. Um, we ultimately decided against creating a, a book bot, book Dropbox. The Friends gave a report, and then our next meeting is June 15th. And then in the packet, uh, you will see a resolution that I drafted. Ultimately, and there is a memo as well. Um, J.J., I think, believe you drafted the memo. Do you want me to talk to it, or would you like to? Yep, so I'll walk through this. So, uh, the library committee, uh, sorry, library board, uh, selected the Sweeney Group to do a feasibility study. Um, ultimately, what the Sweeney Group is going to do is going to go out, use their skills, experience, networks, uh, and, and their understanding of, of how capital campaigns work, um, to engage different donors, volunteers, community stakeholders, and influential people, and interview them about a capital campaign. They're not going to raise any funds, uh, but ultimately, uh, the Sweeney Group would really like us to show a, um, public display of support um, for the, the library project moving forward. Um, so we worked as a group to draft this resolution to essentially just say we do, uh, support, um, the library board and its efforts and to continue to move forward and, uh, show that a public display of support is ultimately what this resolution stands for because it will ultimately help in the Sweeney's group's efforts, right? As they go, and, you know, someone might ask, well, what, what kind of skin in the game does the village board have, or does the village in general have for this project? And this resolution is meant to answer that question. Any questions I can answer?
Any questions from board members?
Um, I don't have a, a question, just a comment that, that during my time on the library board and the library planning committee and before those were formed, learning about the library process and what it takes to build a library. When a village board and community are supportive of a library, it helps with fundraising efforts. It helps to show, um, the rest of the community that we're supportive of it, and, um, it helps with buy-in from the whole community then. Um, so I, I strongly support this resolution, and I am so appreciative of the Friends Group and all that they've done, and the library board, and Cindy, Calm Nelson, who's been quite the force on the library board with all of her efforts, and, um, and thank you, David, for putting this together. Uh, so I hope that we all will support this to show, um, our community that, that we have heard them and that, um, that we are supportive of the library and that, um, hopefully that we can all come together and, um, just have this great asset for our community.
I guess I only have one question on the, on the resolution is, do we have a timeframe for this? Uh, I think it's the last, now therefore be it resolved, Board of Trustees, blah, 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 the citizens, um, in efforts to build a Cottage Grove Public Library. Is it, do we have a timeframe? Because I think that would be helpful for the community to understand where we're kind of looking right now. We don't have crystal balls, we can't see if, you know, recession's coming away or whatever, but is it, is it approximately five years? Is it whatever it is?
Well, um, the...
Cindy's raising her hand.
I mean, I think that we talked about this...
You have to go over there because otherwise the gang can't hear you, sorry.
Is it on?
You have to turn the mic down.
It's something that J.J. and I spent a couple of hours talking about on Friday. Um, right now, it's not in the financial management plan, and I think it's something that we'll be talking about after your prioritization process and when we get to budget this fall. Tentatively, I think, I mean, last year, we put it in at around 2027 for opening. But again, it's not official yet. Um, and we still have a lot of work to do. Um, and like David mentioned, I think, you know, we are planning on visiting every single library in Dean County and talking to their library director and getting their operating costs and finding out what they like and dislike in a library, and what the libraries look like, and what spaces there are, what type of programs they offer. Um, and all of that will be compiled over the next couple of months, too, going forward. Give us a better idea of what the ultimate costs are going to be.
And it's also about, we also need to figure out what our community wants in a library, then, too.
Right, which, sorry, I'm an interrupter. Um, which is part of the, the feasibility study. Um, so Jody Sweeney is going to go out and talk to potential donors, but then try and get a good understanding of what they envision the library to look like, and what spaces they want in it, and what types of programming they want to offer. And I think, I mean, the Friends, Tracy's the president of the Friends, um, have been gathering data this year as well for every event that they put on. They've had hundreds of people show up, and they all get a post-event survey, which is asking them questions about a future library in Cottage Grove. So I think, you know, by the end of the year, we're going to have a lot of data to look at and to, to go forward with what our library would look like. And that's also going to come with a cost next year to the budget. So, I mean, the library board is going to be looking for increased, um, upper, or budget to work with next year to kind of answer a lot of those questions.
So is it safe to say we said within 10 years?
No, I mean, we'd hope so, but we need more data.
The, the issue with putting any specific timeframe on it, um, it, it's just an issue to specify because some people will say, well, that's too far away, and others will say, well, that's too soon. Why are you shoving it down our throats, basically? And, and so it's, it's just to show that, that our board is supportive of the library right now, which will help Jody to compile her data that we need.
And you've already shown support in that you've formed a formal library board and have given us money to work with this year in hiring Jody. Um, and this is kind of the next, we're the number-one priority of you. Um, and we are just looking for that kind of additional verbal support right now going forward for the feasibility study. And I can promise you, I can write a really long report with all the data that we get by the end of the year. Um, but I, I mean, I think we're in a good position moving forward to start making more concrete decisions, you know, after this phase.
I'll make a motion that we pass for the 2027 to support the Cottage Grove Public Library as written.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done, Chris. Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. David, anything else with library board?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Any questions for David? All right, she's patiently waiting back there. Uh, Dear Grove EMS, this is Sarah or Brittany, or both?
Yep, so Matt? Thursday, May 19th. Calls are pretty status quo. We did hire two new, two new full-time paramedics that we had talked about many days ago. Those have been hired to fill the night. I'm wondering if maybe she has another angle? No? Or if, and, and... To the mic. The discussion, the EMS agreement and personal comments from the other municipalities.
The ambulance is on a boat.
Okay.
Well, we know way too much about Fiat Chrysler and their manufacturing practices, but went from part of Mexico to the coast of Mexico by rail and sat there for a couple of months while they waited for a, a ship to get there to take it from Altamira, Mexico. of months while they waited for a ship to get there to take it from Altamira, Mexico, to Davison, Rhode Island. Yeah, so...
You should have just took on a road trip, in a trailer.
We thought about it. There's apparently a lot of vehicle hijacking. We were going to join the group of people that hijack things, but should be in Rhode Island on the 16th. Hopefully, for our next commission meeting, we'll have good news that it actually made it to Rhode Island, and then we just have to wait for it to get from Rhode Island to New York, then from New York to Canada. So...
Thank you.
Some questions of the AFG granting. They still haven't awarded a grant yet, so we're still in the holding pattern on that part.
And we elected officers, and I have the chair, and I cannot remember who the secretary is.
Greg? Thank Greg.
Sounds good.
Greg Frutiger from the Village of Deerfield.
Brittany, do you have anything to add? Chief?
Nope. I'd say you mentioned about calls being status quo. We simmered down a little bit. We were up almost 20% until middle of March, and we're now only up about 6%, which is about what a spot we'd expect to be at, as opposed to that 20% to 25%. Those increases were enormous.
All right. Any questions for Chief, or Sarah, or Brittany? Thanks, Chief, for hanging out with us.
Sure.
Now onward.
God, I'll be there.
Thanks. All right. Next up is Nadvig Landfill. This is either Melissa or David?
That would be me.
Okay.
We met May 23rd. We did, executive member, so Melissa made a motion for Anders to be the chair. That passed. And then I couldn't speak up fast enough, and she made a motion for me to be the secretary. I don't know if I won or lost on that one, but I'm still the secretary, so you come up with your own conclusions there. Approved the minutes, we approved the bills. There were no testing or monitoring results available. And then we closed. It was literally a 15-minute meeting.
It was supposed to be that last one, yeah?
No, it was five minutes. Sorry, I forgot how to read. Next meeting's July 25th at 2022, at 6:15.
Are we expecting reading, then, again? Because I know they were high for a little bit, and then it came down, when they added the extra stacks. Are we getting another?
We haven't had any testing or monitoring results in the last two meetings.
Okay.
So, no news is good news, I guess. When the, when the, when the levels start to go up, then they generally dig more stacks or monitoring wells. But there was last, when strand came, it was, there were no concerns. That's the last time. It was all, it's an old landfill, is basically what it came down to.
Okay, good. All right. Moving then right over to joint fire. So, that's Melissa, David, or Chris?
Do you have a minute?
You can put Chris on the spot, too.
Chris, you want to? No, I'm kidding. Let me, I got him in here somewhere. Okay, bear with me.
It should be burned in your brain, I think, with the topics these days.
Right. This one was actually a fairly long one.
Okay.
Forty-five minutes.
Was it? I thought it was longer than that.
Well, after having five-minute meetings.
Okay, here we go. Fire minute. Wait, no, that's the wrong one. You're going to have to help me out here. You got him closer?
Yeah, here.
I have him in here somewhere, I just can't find him.
Yeah, sorry. Basically, David became chair, and then Chris became secretary, because Anders got the motion in before Chris did.
All done, Steve.
Yeah. Engine three is going up on Wisconsin surplus. We're going to sell the existing extrication equipment, but we're going to wait until we buy new equipment. They're going to remove the cabinets and clutter from the fishbowl and start using it again. For those that don't know, the fishbowl's that glass room at the front of the fire department, or the emergency service building. We did talk about mutual aid partnerships. No names were named, but we did talk through that. And then we did review PAA's recommendations, and we did, there was good movement on that. We did, there were some open questions around how equalized value with improvements was calculated, and when it's calculated. Do we have to calculate it? Does the Department of Revenue have to calculate it? I was pretty sure of that, but I wanted to check with Matt, so we kind of, we'll continue to review that. And then, as Melissa said, we elected officers. And then we went and took a tour of, actually, we closed the meeting, and then we took a tour of the new engine, which is pretty cool. And Melissa got to honk the horn.
Yes. I pushed the button for the siren, not even honking the horn. It was...
She made a lot of noise.
Very loud, and it was fun. And it's an awesome vehicle that will keep our community safe, safer. The one other thing, David, was the parking lot island removal. I see there's a typo on the minutes that says parking lot island removal. The company that we are contracting with is busy on other projects right now, but it wasn't deemed that it was a huge priority either way, so that as long as they get it done by the end of the year, that it's fine, or by the time this flies, basically. So, sometimes this fall, the island should be removed.
And I can add that the equalized value for improvements, and basically, the whole report is, it all comes out from the Department of Revenue every summer. So, all that information's included on there, and we have that, so.
All right. And if you did see the video with the Engine Three coming through down by 18:55, I think they must have had a drone or something like that. It's really cool. So, take a look. I think it's on, I think I saw it on Facebook. All right, moving on then to law enforcement. I will take this and then let Chief jump in, or Chris, and go from there. So, we met on the 24th of May. Just covered normal activity, everything's, from a budget perspective, we're burning through that pretty well, just with the three new officers. We had an unexpected expense on one of the squads, the 2018 squad. Fuel costs are certainly up. So, I think the Chief is kind of plugging already for the 2023 budget, that we're going to have to look at that, kind of examine those. The labor costs and everything else are in line. It's just all these other things that are popping up that we all know that are there, are hitting those budget lines pretty heavily. We, on the incident breakdown thing, we had some more activity on the liquor license, as we approved them earlier, so that there was a bunch of activity there. Those popped in. And their thefts of autos are down right now, knock on wood. The traffic grants were being utilized quite well, and the officers are doing their job when getting after those who are both operating under influence, as well as, you know, speeds and traffic things. Yes, there always continues to be steadily busy, so is the detective. What else did we touch on? I think that was it. Fairly short meeting, but Chief, anything that I missed?
Okay. No, that was pretty much it. Like, fuel's gone up dramatically. We understand we're going to go over budget there. We're probably going to go over budget on a few other items. It's just, it's just the way it is right now. Everything's more expensive. We had to update a bunch of new officers with vests and uniforms and all that equipment, so that's extra cost. So, but otherwise, the other areas of the budget are just fine, like overtime and all that. And when you see, like, the traffic grants, our officers do those on a voluntary basis. They don't have to do them, but they do have to make a certain number of stops per the four-hour shift, and a certain number of those stops have to result in tickets. So, when you see a bunch of stops being made in one section of the village, you can assume that's probably a traffic grant. And so, the officers get out there and use that, and there's a lot of that money out there right now, because a lot of departments are short on personnel and just aren't doing it. So, it's available.
I know a number of people are appreciating it, particularly in the sections that are prone to speeding.
Yeah, and like you said, as far as stolen vehicles and thefts from vehicles, it's gone down compared to last year. At this time, it was just very heavy traffic in that, and I think it's because a lot of the groups that were doing it got caught and/or moved. So, it wasn't local Cottage Grove people doing it. It was a lot of people from outside of our area, and I know one group that was specifically doing carjackings, things like that. They're in custody.
All right. Any questions? Moving then to parks and rec and forestry. Heidi, you've got quite a few things on here, so.
Sure.
And Sean's here, too.
Yeah, I'm going to toss it over to Sean and Josh in a little bit, but I'll go over our meeting first. So, we met on Thursday, May 26th, and we did have a resident join us from West Lawn, and he thought the new plan for West Lawn, where we took out the skate rink, was a great improvement. But he wants to see more landscaping and trees to help kind of create some privacy for the surrounding properties. We talked about public notification of herbicide and fertilizer applications in our parks, and that was a result of a resident question about any applications at North Lawn Park by Taylor Prairie School. And Sean and Kevin Loftenberg are going to come up with kind of a document that would be available on our website, that talks about the types of products that are used, and when-ish they would be applied. And then Kevin is good about letting the department know when they would get applied, so we could avoid programming that for that day, and make that information, just that calendar, available on the website. We actually don't use that many products on the parks. There's one application in the spring, and then in the fall. So, it's really minimal use of any product. So, more to come on that. Then we have a couple discussing considers for some groups that would like to have campouts at our parks. So, first is the Boy Scout Troop 145 at Fireman's Park on September 24th. I don't know, Sean, if you have any, it's kind of something that was done a little bit pre-pandemic, and then it was pulled back a little while. So, now the groups are back to doing their campouts.
Yep. The troop has done this in the past, and so they're just looking to do it again in 2022. Fireman's Park, so just be near the lion shelter. Just requesting that the park hours be extended to allow them to occupy the park all night. We'll make sure the restrooms are open, and it's pretty minimal on us.
Any questions for Sean on this one? Otherwise, it's a great opportunity for the kids to get together, I think. Hopefully, not get too many miscat bites, but by then, they should be down.
I'll make a motion to allow the Boy Scout Troop 145 to have a campout in Fireman's Park on September 24th, 2022.
All right. Thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Next up, then?
Yep, the Monona Grove Boys Soccer is also looking to have a campout at Bachan Park on August 19th. They had one scheduled last year, but then they canceled it last minute with the uptick in COVID numbers, so they're hoping they'll be able to have it this year.
Yep. Again, same type of scenario. They're looking to do a team-building event for their soccer program, just looking to extend the park hours to allow them to be at Bachan Park overnight. And again, we'll make sure that the restrooms are operable and ready for them to use.
Splash pad will not be on?
Will not be on.
They take advantage of that, I think, probably would.
I think so.
Any questions there for Sean?
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, David. Motion second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. And then we have some bids to discuss, right?
Yep. So, for the, I'll wrap up the rest of the meeting. We started Music in the Grove. Summer programming is going to ramp up. Exciting time for our parks. The splash pad opened. So, then, our next meeting then will be in June, and then all, since our last meeting, has been the bid opening for our projects. So, in our kind of unpredictable price volatile time we're in, Josh and Sean are going to talk about how that went.
I'll start off. Unfortunately, like the public works projects that we were in earlier this year, that were, you know, roughly around a half a million under budget for the combination of three, the two parks projects that we recently received were both over budget. And we kind of saw it coming a little bit. Each one of the public works projects, as we were bidding it, was getting a little bit more and more expensive. We were, we heard the prices were getting a little bit higher, and also that contractors were starting to get a little bit more full. For both projects, so, there was two different, two different bids. And the first one, and I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay. Do you typically, Lisa, share your window? Is that what you do, or your entire screen?
Um...
Right. Yep, I got it here. Thanks, Matt. So, for the people online, and for everybody here, I'm hoping you can see this. I'm going to, I'm going to kind of just try to zoom in. So, the first project was, it involved Community Park, Red Hawk Park, and West Lawn. We grouped those three parks together, because it made more sense to bid them as kind of one project versus separate bids, you know, and talking with contractors and understanding that you probably would get higher prices as you divide them up. First, so for the budget for that, you can see we had 735,000 when you combine those three parks. The bids that came in were slightly over that, at 767, so a little bit higher. And I also just wanted to point out that, you know, when you put engineering in this, and the bids, it's always nice when you budget for it, to remember that you might need a 5% construction contingency. Let's say there's a change, or there's a, there's a change order, it's nice just to, just to have that in there. So, you know, it is higher at like 838,541 versus the 735. That was, that was thought to be the budget late, late last summer. Then there was also some alternatives as part of this, this project. There was trail extension, and we'll talk about that in Community Park. There was lighting in Community Park, and there was a zip line alternative for West Lawn. So, as was mentioned, the inline skating rink in West Lawn was pulled as part of the park's commission.
Red Hawk or what?
I'm sorry. Did I say West Lawn?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Red Hawk, yes. Was pulled as part of that, and some other things were added, and we can look at that in a second. So, those were alternatives. You can see the alternative amount there is 211, which then brings, you know, the total up, up over around that million-dollar range altogether, right around a million dollars, for all the alternatives. So, I'm going to zoom back out. I'm just going to show you what those two projects entail. First, the planning document that was done at, at Community Park. You can see there's kind of the brown-looking building, new community center, that's not on the docket now, but will be in the future. Pickleball courts, that's in the bid. New playground equipment, demo of all the existing stuff, the path that kind of runs through here. And then also, a path extension to the south was brought up as part of that planning document, to Weldon Bridge. So, as part of, bear with me here as I zoom in to make this larger. So as part of, bear with me here as I zoom in to make this larger. As part of that, the bid alternative one would be this yellow portion. So bid alternative one would be that yellow portion that you're seeing that would bring this all the way back to Wielden Bridge Road to extend that multi-use path up to the pickleball courts and to Community Park from the road instead of coming, you know, up the adjacent road there, Bonnie Road, to Lori Lane. Then there was also the alternative two, which is just the lighting that you're seeing within the park by the pickleball courts. There's one here, one on the other side, three lights. So two on the corners and then one in the middle on the opposite side. And then that third alternative, I'm going to jump to Red Hawk. Sorry. Is that zip line. So there's a zip line here you can see all highlighted in yellow as part of the park. The existing playground equipment would stay. There'd be new swing sets added north of that existing playground equipment. And then there'd also be a pavilion added and some paths and paving as part of that project overall. The zip line would be that alternative bid.
John, would that complete that park then?
Yeah, that would complete the park. So Sean, I don't know if you want, let me just, let me go back to those costs and zoom into, oops. Zoom into that a little bit. You know, if there were some alternatives selected, I know we have these alternatives listed, one, two, three. That doesn't necessarily mean the order of alternatives that you have to pick. And we didn't put them in, I guess, in order of maybe preference either. And Sean, you may have a preference now that you see some of the costs. If those were considered, maybe what you'd like to see first, if there was a pick and choosing going on?
Well, I don't want to pick and choose. I wish you'd do it all. But if we needed to do that, one thing to consider too, the West Lawn stuff, you guys had decided that that was going to come out of park development moving forward. So that's not something that we would be borrowing for. But in my opinion, the trail extension to the south to Wheel Bridge would be the most important. And then the lighting of the pickleball court. Because we can set ourselves up to light those courts in the future if we need to. But that would kind of be my order. And I would really like to get, the West Lawn, I'd really like to finish that park in that area of the village and just get that complete.
West Lawn or Red Hawk, sorry?
Red Hawk.
Yeah.
So you're saying, Sean, if I, you're saying zip line first to complete that part?
Yes.
And then when Sean was saying, you know, alternative one, trail extension and lighting, if we had to wait, you are coming back to do a building there in the future. You could do lighting then and light the courts because you'll have some electrical work with that if you were to wait. And the trail extension could always be added at a different time if you wanted to wait on that also.
Are you going to disturb any of those pickleball courts when you start? If you did it after the fact, you may.
I think you can trench, you can trench your conduit out and around, but you're going to disturb the grass and area around there again. I mean, John, it would be, I mean, it would be nice to get all that complete right along the pickleball court and that extension, that trail extension in if you were to go that route because then you just don't have to disturb that area again. And you could just focus on where that one building location is as part of that park.
Josh, so just looking globally at all the streets projects that have been reported, and those were roughly a half million under.
Yep.
And then how much are these over and what does it say?
You know, all combined? So we'll look at Bakken in a second. And Bakken's also over. But if you were to include this with all the alternatives, and you were to, in a second, we'll talk about a couple of cost savings in Bakken, you're roughly, it's still about a half a million dollars over on the park stuff, but you're about a half a million dollars. So honestly, the bid package over, or I'm sorry, the bonding package overall, Matt, although it would go to different categories, I understand that, it's roughly about what you budgeted at the beginning, you know, this past late summer, early fall.
I had a question as far as the lighting. Did we talk with the neighbors in that area about lighting for the pickleball courts?
They're aware. And I made it when I sent stuff out, and I've also talked to several of them. And everybody seemed okay with it. And just, we haven't done a lighting plan on it yet that I'm aware of, but it's going to be, there'll be very little pollution.
Right, but then also by having the lights there, then people can use the park later at night, which is, like, do the neighbors realize that too?
Well, the lights wouldn't be able to be active after nine or 10 o'clock.
Okay.
So it would still be park hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
It would just extend your time in the months where you start to lose some light.
Correct.
Right, but the weather's still nice.
Or you could play it in the winter?
Can. Under the loop.
I still don't know what pickleball is, but, okay.
So Humber was the, actually the only bid that you received on this project. There were several interested parties and we thought maybe we would get a couple more bids. But at the end of the day, that's the only person that bid. You know, we went through the pricing and from what we're seeing on other bids, both here in the community and in other communities, it's not a whack even from only receiving one. Prices have been going up and we have seen some of that. So we didn't have a big concern in like, oh my gosh, you know, you only got one bid here. Red flags, this is way over what we were expecting it to be. We did anticipate this getting a little higher. And there was a handful of things that were added since maybe that was budgeted, you know, at the beginning as far as just some amenities in the parks, so.
So tonight, we're looking to then award a bid and decide which alternates we would add on to the bid. Is that kind of what we're hoping to come away with?
Yeah, I mean, right, you could do, you could, I mean, you could award something for the 2022 parks and some of the alternatives. And I didn't know if you wanted to also talk about Bakken Park first as part of the overall thing, or you just want to talk, you know, award one and then focus on the other. We did have a discuss, you know, in really next steps because the Bakken Park one, we do want to go back to the contractor and talk about some potential changes or cost savings that could be part of that project that we can see right away from some of the bid. And that one would likely involve, you know, an award with a change order kind of attached to it before contracts are signed. Something we'd like to, I guess, talk with the attorney about also.
Sean, sorry, Josh, Sean, does that need to go back to the parks then? That discussion? Or is it just more of a, Parks has already kind of talked about it, strategy set. You guys know what, you need to go back to the contractors and try to discuss?
Yep, correct. On this one, it's more on 2022 parks for Community, Red Hawk, and West Lawn. The base bid's pretty straightforward. It's more of a question of, you know, what do you guys want to accept as alternatives, one, two, and three? Whether all of them, part of them? That's the direction we're looking for, at least so we can start forward with the contracts for, with Humber.
Josh, just to go back really quick. So I'm confused on alternative one and then West Lawn. Like what, because I'm looking at my packet here, it doesn't really, unless I'm missing something, I guess I don't understand what the difference is.
So West Lawn, alternative one is the trail extension in Community Park. So that was that. Let me zoom out.
Oh, okay.
That was just, that was just adding this trail above and beyond that yellow portion there, David?
Okay.
That would have been the bid alternative, so.
David, are you maybe wondering what the difference between Red Hawk and West Lawn are because they're both in West Lawn? Is that part of it maybe? Well, West Lawn is, I thought West Lawn ran into, like, okay, yeah, I guess I don't know what West Lawn is. West Lawn's the outlets.
Yes, so when we refer to West Lawn, we're talking about the outlets that run from Red Hawk down to GDS. So adding some amenities along that trail that are there. That's what we're saying when we say West Lawn.
And those are not being borrowed for, that, those are park development fund monies that are covering that. And then Red Hawk is the park. I honestly, when you call it West Lawn, like, West Lawn Drive, like, runs right in front of the Black Bear. So I always thought it was the trail from Community Park to the, over by Black Bear is what I thought that was referring to. It probably should technically say West Lawn Fourth Edition Outlets.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. Totally changes the game.
So those are in the base bid. There's some trail stuff and some minor amenities over there as far as, you know, some benches and also a dock.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Fishing pier that's over there. That's in the base bid. That trail extension is just for Community Park. It's that extension from kind of the pickleball courts all down, all the way down to Wielden Bridge.
Okay.
And then the other section you're talking about would be later. From the Creek Cross through to BB.
I guess I'm personally more, I mean, if you take cost out of it for a second, like, alternate one, I'd be more interested in than the West Lawn project. Is that, I guess, is that an option here? That isn't an option to pick from? In terms of prioritization? Again, this is David's interest here. This has nothing to do with anybody else's apparently. But I'm just curious, like, and again, on the agenda too, it's just a discuss. So I've got that question too. But I guess, how are these? I'm confused as to what I get to pick. That's what I'm confused on.
West Lawn is park funds, right?
I'm sorry?
West Lawn is park funds.
Yes.
So that's not part of?
The borrowing.
The borrowing.
That's going to happen.
Yeah.
No matter what. That's why we didn't have that as an alternative. That was just in the base bid, something that was going to be accomplished as part of this park.
The benches and the.
Yeah, I guess I was just, I'm reading strands of memo here. It says the bid included a bid bond. So I just assumed it was all bid. But then you said it's in the park fund, so that I guess.
That one.
Oh, and the bid bond isn't the bond that you're going to do. It's the contractor's bond that says they're good for, they're good for these bids. So if they pull out, it's an insurance. It's an insurance that we would get to then, you know.
Okay.
Work through that.
It's your bond.
Yes.
Makes some sense.
Yeah, that's not your bond.
I'm assuming way too many things here for one.
So, yeah, alternative one again is the trail extension in Community Park from kind of the pickleball court down to Wielden Bridge. Alternative two is the lighting of the pickleball court. And alternative three is the zip line at Red Hawk.
Red Hawk.
So Red Hawk Park will still have some of those amenities. That zip line just wouldn't be added.
So from the second subtotal on up, so main projects and alternative projects, is West Lawn the only one that's coming out of the park fund? Everything else we need to borrow for?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So I would just note that I really like the trail extension from Wield Bridge to Community Park. I think that's a great addition. And especially if we're putting in the pickleball courts. I know that it's, even though I don't know what it is, I know that there's teams and stuff going on and that's really taken off. So I'm glad that we have the pickleball courts coming. And I think that trail will be important to bring people to our community park. And along those lines, I think the lighting to do now is really important too. So and since this bid's kind of over in our other, or this projects, these projects are kind of over, but our road projects are kind of under and it kind of offsets, that makes me okay with going along with all of them, all of these alternate bids and projects. And so that's, and I think the zip line is really important to get Red Hawk done too. That, as we've heard over the years, the West Lawn additions, four through six, have been waiting for that part for a while. And so I think it's important to get that complete. So that's my two cents.
Josh, in your packet, do you have a map for the West Lawn? Just so I can visualize.
I don't, I don't in this. I should have, but I didn't think.
Okay.
I can send you some.
Yeah, if you could send me some, that'd be great.
Definitely send it to you.
And I'll put.
I think there's three ponds.
Yeah.
Yep, it's kind of a series of different locations.
The only other thing I do want to add about the zip line is my middle child, Cole, joined the Parks and Rec Committee meeting and actually put a plug in for the zip line. And so him being an autistic kid, that took a lot of coaching from mom and dad to get him to do that. And he was very proud of that, so I just figured I'd, I'd put a plug in for that. So Cole really wants the zip line, for what it's worth. Yes, it does.
Did Parks approve the bids?
Uh, no.
They stood the strategy and everything for going back on Bakken, but they approved the bid, I should say.
The opening was after our last meeting. It was just, yeah.
It was this past Wednesday.
And we met the Thursday before. But if we continue another month and that's waiting longer to order all the equipment and such, and it's already at 10 weeks, I think, for park equipment, so.
Yeah, I know the park equipment is worrying the contractors a little bit, especially for this one. There's such a long lead time for a lot of this that they want to make sure they hit the deadlines for everybody too. So they want a little more insurance, especially on this one with all the park equipment as part of it. So, yeah, I mean, if we're going to, I guess the idea is the parks commission, they knew about all this going in and they approved all of these different alternatives too. And if it could be funded, that's sort of what they wanted, right? Heidi would be fair to say.
Yeah, I would say that, yes, the committee was hoping that these would all be able to be funded in these projects. And completing the parks, I think, getting them done off the project plate and costs will just continue to go up to kind of get that completed and then move on to the next thing. And then the trail extension, I think that that's important for a lot of different reasons that Melissa talked about earlier. And I think Public Works is working toward, you know, making more connectivity in alternate transportation. So, yeah, the trail extension is not one that we, Parks Committee specifically thought was going to happen in this phase. But I think that they're overall very supportive of connectivity for the parks.
So to finish that trail, then the other way to BB, is that then kind of, is Parks already talking about that? Because obviously you have one trail and then you want to finish it.
Yeah, we've talked about this. I've talked about this with Strand about hopefully getting some numbers together for the next budget cycle and tying this all together, hopefully within the next year.
Right, so that would be taking it further to the north up to Conscor Road. That'd be a nice connection for this park.
Yeah.
And for just the neighborhood and connectivity.
It says discuss, so I.
I think direction, we can come back and officially award the bid at the next meeting.
Yep.
Josh can go back to Humber and try to value engineer a little bit and keep the number down, maybe. And we'll have official, an official bid awarded at the next meeting. But we should be able to get these numbers to elders so they can move forward with the,
Right, with the bonding.
With the bond sale process and get that going, so.
Right, I don't think, Matt, getting the numbers done would be more on the Bakken versus this one. This one's, I think this one's pretty set. There isn't a whole lot of stuff that I think we can probably take or move out, except for maybe not choosing an alternative, I would say at this point. The Bakken one, which we can talk to in a little bit, there's some cost savings and some value engineering that we can add into that to reduce some of the costs. But, go ahead.
Is our direction to proceed with, let's say we do all of, all three alternates, is that enough for Humber to get going and start ordering things? I mean, is that, I guess that we don't really have much choice because we can't award the bid. I could see it just dragging out and then now we're at like 16 weeks playground lead time.
We're two weeks away from the next board meeting, right? I think we can start to say, okay, you guys are moving forward this. We can start getting contracts and stuff together for them to sign and give the Humber group some assurance that we're moving in that direction, knowing that in a couple of weeks, we're going to discuss it again here. And it's just a matter of finalizing. I have no problem talking to them and discussing that with them. They may not place the final order until today, but they can probably start to get it all in place with their suppliers and then sign.
So we don't want to do a motion even though? Like, because I'd like to just.
Just say you're verbal support.
Our legal counsel isn't here and.
And it doesn't say-
It doesn't have a fine print that says anything could have final action, but it doesn't only just say discuss, it also talks about next steps. It makes it sound like it's not a file.
Yeah.
Agenda item, if I was reading that as someone that was interested in the item, I would not anticipate there being a final action given that language, so.
But could we tell Strand to move forward with the three alternate bids and a motion? Cause that's kind of like next steps.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what Josh has gotten out of the conversation.
Yeah, I think a more emotional direction, but I think, I think he's heard, we're not hearing any-
Notes.
Opposition to moving forward that way, so I think, I think you have what you need, Josh.
And then obviously we want to see what, what comes out of the Bakken, so we can get-
Yeah.
Approved along with this.
It appears maybe Hamburg's even on tonight, so they're hearing a little of this also. As part of our discussion, so I can discuss that with them. Zach and I can discuss that with them further. Zach's here with me tonight too, sorry, he's, he's been working with Sean a lot on this, and uses the parks, right? You're just outside of town, so. So let's talk about Bakken a little bit. So Bakken, we had a, had a budget for that one of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, and that one we were actually working with a skate park, Spawn Ranch, who was designed, built, you know, designs them and builds them, and actually was our only bid on this project. And that's, we thought we were pretty good actually going into the bids with that cost, and they came back with this one point one six nine, the only bid also, and there was a couple of their skate park people in, in on the pole plans, and we thought we might get some, some second bids, second or third bids, and just, it just never happened. And we've discussed it with them a little bit of, you know, why are we outside of our budget? We thought we were gonna come in maybe around that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we were getting closer to final design, we thought we were gonna be under the budget, you know, what, what was those added costs, and some of it was just the way costs of, of, of materials are going that we've been hearing from them here more recently, and I just wanted to show you kind of what the plan is for that park. You know, you have that kind of gathering area with, with a couple little, I would say sunshades there and, and a sign at the entrance, and then the skate park is this larger rectangular piece, and then this pump track is, is what you see in the lower part of that visual. And we looked at their bid, we looked at it pretty close, and we had some conversations with them, and we talked to them about some potential savings as part of it. Some things we thought we could, we could eliminate with, through conversations with them was remove some color concrete. Really doesn't change the overall of the design, it was more of kind of dressing it up and adding some concrete riveting and some other integral colored concrete as part of the project, as part of when we were, when we were working with them and, and the landscape architect. So you could get rid of that, that'd be thirty thousand. Some synthetic turf, we still want to have synthetic turf, but they say there's an, there's an equal out there that we could save about sixteen thousand dollars, so inside the pump track, instead of that being turf that you would mow or have to take care of, synthetic turf inside there would be much easier as part of that. So there would be a cost savings as we look into that other synthetic turf. There's some geotechnical changes that, you know, the geotech was talking about some massive undercutting as part of this, and I think there was some confusion at what was being built here, so we believe that, that we could probably save around twenty-four thousand dollars, talking with them on some of that. And then the big thing is, is lighting, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for lighting. So, let's, let's move back to, to the lighting on the site. You can see there is four lights. One in each corner, and maybe you can't quite see them all, so I'm gonna zoom into that. One in each corner of, of the skate park. So there's one in the north, two in the north, two on the south. These are some, these are the big kind of, you know, poles that, that shine down. We've heard lighting has gone up dramatically as part of, part of recent bids, and to eliminate that, you know, we were talking about that around the country, how many of these are lit, and I forget what they were talking, but it's not a lot of these that are actually lit.
Correct.
I think it was under like ten percent overall of, of lighting, and that's again, something that could be added in the future too. So something you could eliminate now and add in the future if, if you, if you really felt the need more there.
I mean, if you think about it right now, like what time, what time does the park close, nine?
Ten officially.
I mean, closing at ten, I mean, even in the dog days of summer, I mean, you know, it's a tough one. You know, cause like, just, when you, the more people you have, right, on a skate park, right, there's more, the darker it is, there's, there's more, the higher the chance for a collision.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
You, I was totally with you until you said, "No lighting," and then I was like, "Ah, no," and I mean, cause it, it's just, you have this awesome skate park and then you don't put lights in, right? It's like, to me, it's like a last mile kind of thing, like it's a, yes, less than ten percent of light, but at the same point, it's a really cool skate park with a pump track too, and no lights, it's-
What age?
I understand why, right? Like, I totally get the why, but it's just disappointing, right? And again, I get, things are going up, but go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I was just wondering what age is the cure towards age of skate park?
Anybody that can walk till they can't. You know, I mean, literally, it's, it's gonna be a wheels, we're called a wheels park, so it's not just a skate park, but it'll be razors, it'll be skates, it'll be skateboards, whoever. I'm sure David will be out there.
I will absolutely be there.
Yeah. One thing to, to think about too, when it comes to the lighting, is that we will, regardless of whether we light the whole complex like that, we'll certainly have to have security lighting.
Yeah.
You know, just so somebody doesn't fall in down there, and we can, we can probably do some things with maybe some floods that add more light to it, and then also work with the Clark Street project as to just where the, the streetlights are positioned as well. So I don't anticipate it being dark, but it's not gonna be the same as lighting up the whole complex.
And just, I have some major budget price increases, so, you know, in talking with them, the earthwork and the mold and just the fuel costs as we were talking about before, just is throwing up the price drastically, and the concrete one is actually pretty recent, within the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of talk around concrete, and being able to get the cement and potentially concrete rationing near the ender, you know, near the fall of this year, so that's really started to spike concrete prices. So, you know, we were, the three of us were talking about it quite a while, about, well, should we just hold off and rebid this, and, you know, I'm scared to tell you to rebid it because I, I just, I just think it's gonna be more expensive, you know, further down the line, especially with the current market, unless we see a massive change in that market, so.
Josh, can you tell me, I mean, like, when I look at the bid, you have, they put forty-six K for artificial turf, but you have minus sixteen K for synthetic turf?
Yeah.
Like, it's hard for me in the, in the diagrams to get a scale of this pump track, but I guess, what's wrong with just having grass?
It was put in there as just truly a maintenance issue, because we're afraid that, that that's gonna end up being muddy in there.
Yeah.
And end up being a mess, and then we have to go in there and try and maintain and mow it, so it was, it was added, just for that reason, to, to cut down on maintenance.
I think that would be a safety thing too, cause the mud gets on the track to back and then start doing that. And possibly doesn't look good either.
Or we could have the leaf truck dump leaves.
It's a compost bin.
As mulch, it's compost bin.
It's, it sounded like, and maybe I'm wrong, you and Zach know, it is, a lot of times they will artificial turf, those, those interior fields too, that was a little bit more of a standard, I guess, when, when they were looking at, at this facility.
So is this, are you, are you proposing a different type of turf?
They were proposing that there's some different alternatives that they could use, that they think they could reduce that cost from forty-six to thirty then, right?
Okay.
If you're seeing forty-six, the, the sixteen would bring that down.
Okay, that's what I-
Again, I, these costs that I was, that I'm showing, has been just more kind of conversations with them. This is one we would want to investigate further, if you guys are serious about going forward with this bid, let us kind of pin some of this down. I want to talk to Rick a little bit about how much conversation can we have before we accept our award, and then there's gonna be a change order for some of these things after it, to do it.
I guess, yeah, my question with the difference in the sixty thousand turf is, what's the life expectancy difference? So are you gonna be, are you gonna be-
We gotta look at some of that.
You know, eating it later on in ten years, you gotta replace it now instead of twenty-five, or something like that, where you just, you know, you're, you spend it now or spend it later, or something like that.
I mean, if we weren't to take, if, if we were to keep all of these things the way they were, and it goes back to Matt's question of, well, big picture, when we were gonna borrow in our budget, you know, now we are probably two, two hundred and fifty over what that big borrow was when you set the budget back this past late summer, fall. If you take this off, you come actually pretty close to where all of that budget was with Public Works and Parks. But I get it, I, it's hard to take some things out, lighting and other things, when you, you're building such a nice facility, and then, you know, you start cutting a few things from it.
Why nickel and dim it, right, if you're gonna spend the money? At two hundred and fifty K, ten years from now, I mean, you're not really gonna, no one's gonna say ten years from now after we build it, man, I wish we hadn't put these lights in, we hadn't done this, we used different turf, like, no one's gonna say that, but it's hard before it's built, that's when you have all these conversations, but it- Yeah. I mean, it's, the overlong majority of this half is right, just for the skate park, and it's in concrete, right?
Yeah, yeah. The majority, it's just taking the lights out and changing a little bit of concrete. Right now, we can have some other conversations with them too, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to reduce it, you know, quite a bit more. You're not gonna get back to probably what was budgeted, you're always getting a little bit over that.
I mean, ju- just to ask the question, I'm gonna have, I just want to ask the question, I'm not advocating for it, but I'm just curious, right? If you, I mean, is there any major design changes we can make to, to decrease the cost, or the cost of the cost for the skate park elements?
Zach, any thoughts on that? Zach had worked on a lot of the design side of it.
Again, I, I don't agree with it, I just, I wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
So, Zach Simpson, Strand Associates, Josh introduced me before. We've actually got a sub Blake with architecture and planning who's worked closely with Vince at Spawn Ranch, and as soon as we got the bids, he actually reached out to Vince and talked through what, what they could maybe do to shrink this down, or add or deduct parts of it, or simplify it, and honestly, I think that they're pretty locked in on the layout. It's, it's really some of the more decorative things or the cosmetic things that would be changed to reduce the cost, not the overall footprint. Is that the feeling you got too? I mean, that's-
Functionality of it, right?
Yeah, the overall flow of it and the functionality of it is, is pretty locked in.
Okay.
Yeah.
I suppose they gotta have, the turns have to be certain turns and stuff like that, so if you want to try to scrunge something down, you'll end up having accidents or issues later on.
Right, you want to allow enough space for users too, and you don't want it to be too compact, right, so. Yeah, as far as the layout, I mean, I couldn't think of anything, Zach, except for potentially, you know, some of your entry features where you make a connection, but you're gonna add that at some point regardless, right? And there isn't a lot of big costs up, up, up front there. It is, it is the track itself and, and the, and the park, the skate park, that is where you're seeing a majority of all those costs.
Are you gonna comment? Yeah, I did just have a question about the lighting, cause we kind of talked a little bit about it at the committee. The lights that are proposed are those like dark skylights, and they don't light up like the neighbors' houses, and like they're, they're specialized lighting to reduce kind of the surrounding area being affected by it, is that kind of like the idea?
Yeah, there's like a, yeah, that shows the overall like footprint. So, you know, Musco is the light, you know, the light manufacturer did that foot candle stuff for us to make sure that we weren't gonna impede on the, that would be the house to the east, right? That would be the closest house, right, to the, right, to the east there. So we make sure that, that the spillover of the light isn't outside a certain boundary, yeah. So that, when they laid out the design and they, and they put something together, they made sure that we didn't have that spill of light. It was more downward facing, that, that is the goal, yeah. That can be adjusted to some degree as they put them up, so.
If they were floodlights, would that change that it would just be less lighting and maybe more to the west of, or like how, if we took out these lights and just had the safety lighting, would that impact the neighbors more so? Or is it hard to say without digging in?
I don't think so. I don't think the flood lighting would change, would change it. It would probably reduce the overall lighting, you know, and it would be more localized to just that kind of one spot. You know, you're talking about safety cameras or something else, so you'd have enough, but you definitely wouldn't have the usability like you'd have if the whole course was lit up. It'd be more like a corner, right? And spill, you'd still have some, some light, but you wouldn't be able to see the objects that you're trying to, and I'm not a skater, but the objects that you're trying to maneuver or, you know, there's gotta be some terms. Anybody have terms? I can't imagine doing it with just like the one floodlight, you know, you'd want it all lit up if you were gonna do it in the, in the darker hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can share that. Sean might have something he can share here. I can stop sharing, Sean. He's pulling up the, um-
Trying to make this bigger.
Does that touch?
So you can see the, the zeros, that, that's the distance away from the park where there is, there is no light pollution. So that basically takes it right up to the tree line that there's, there, you can't tell that the, the lights are on. If that makes sense.
Yep.
You mean for the pump track lights, if they were in?
Yeah, for the lights that were proposed, yeah.
Do you have one that shows what it looks like with the streetlights only?
No, no, I don't. That likely would not spill back into that as much, because a lot of those streetlights are focused more to not back spill.
Right.
But front, front light. We probably would have to change out, if we were gonna want a little back spill in this area, we could also with that contract, see if we could add a light or two maybe that would spill back this way, but you're, it's not gonna, you know, a lot of times you can, you can gauge that, that if the light's on this side of the street, right, by the pump track side, you know, that light is gonna probably just cover to the opposite side of the street, which if you can look at that image up there, isn't really far. Now, if you don't have a back, you know, protection on that, and it spills back too, you're only gonna get maybe halfway out into the, into that facility before you're gonna get to that zero kind of light opportunity too. So you're still gonna want to bring some lights, you know, out this way. If that makes sense, you know, if you're, if you're thinking about it spilling the same amount into the street, onto the other side, you can maybe put a dual head on there and have one arm going one way and one going the other, but again, you're not gonna stretch all the way to the far south side of this facility. I would, I would guess that somebody's gonna want to add lights in the future if you really wanted to live. I wouldn't rely just on the street lighting.
In putting the, putting the cost into perspective, Josh, you might as well remind me about the, the street projects. Were they about six million total around there, engineering all in?
Yeah, so, yeah, I can share this.
So, so just high level, add, add the Parks projects in, couple, a little over two million, so if we're talking about a hundred thousand dollar cost or a two hundred thousand dollar cost, two hundred thousand would be roughly two percent of, a two percent increase to the, to the borrowing.
Right.
Just to put it in, in the context.
Said I was sharing, but it's not, it's not popping up. So, the three street projects, the budget for those were, were six, six one. The bids came in around four, five. Now, when you put engineering, and I put a five percent just contingency on those bids, just in case they go up, we usually have a pretty good record of keeping those contingencies low, but I want to make sure they're there. It's five point six, so you're, you know, half a million dollars there, and we're gonna still try to keep that five percent even lower, so that's, but you're right, when you add all the projects together, it's, it's a small percent.
That doesn't, does, that doesn't include, or does it include your, the engineering cost?
It does.
Okay.
The five point six there?
Yeah.
Includes engineering plus, and, plus an extra five percent contingency on the bid, the construction bid, if there is some big time changeovers. I don't-
Yeah, so I, I mean, I feel pretty good about that.
Can you, can you go back to the other, the Parks graph that you had, table?
Um, okay, hold on, give me one second here.
I'm making you jump around, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Keep it on its toes, it's good.
Which, what do you want to zoom in on here? I know it's hard to see.
I'm just trying to do, I'm trying to do the math of the difference between total for both projects.
Yep.
And then plus the overage.
So, on the bottom I have that, both projects, I don't know if you can see this, it's, what you had budget is one seven- So on the bottom, I have that, both projects, um, I don't know if you can see this, it's, what you had budgeted is one, seven?
One, seven.
What was bid was two, one with everything all in. So all in, that's with no subduct, no, you know, lighting everything on even the, the pump track.
It's about a hundred grand.
But I did, you gotta also factor in a little bit of the engineering that's part of that. So it's, it's closer to two, four with some contingency in engineering.
So all in, it's even, with what we saved on the road projects, plus the overage here, you only had about a, about a, let's call it two, a little under two hundred thousand dollar difference over.
Yes, over. And that's with me putting a five percent contingency on all the construction projects, saying that they're gonna come over what was bid.
So two and a half, two and a half percent?
Yeah.
More than, more than budgeted? But spread, you know, spread out over a twenty-year borrowing?
Yeah. At the end of the day, like I said earlier, at the end of the day, it's, it's fairly close. I'm actually pretty surprised we got as close as we did with the market and the way the economy's rolling, but, um, it's.
So you'll bring us on that, that name to first.
And you're, and, sorry. And you're gonna try to go back, and what I'm seeing here in this table, you're still gonna go try to get some value engineering.
Yeah, on Bakken, those were the, uh, we can discuss a few more things with them to see, you know, what else, what else potentially could we save value engineering on?
Even that, that right there is the two percent, two hundred percent.
Yeah, that's why I was saying earlier that if, if you actually just get rid of these, you actually hit what you budgeted.
I catch up eventually.
I know, I know. Well, there's a lot here, so I'm, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you were able to put it together. There, there's a lot of different numbers rolling here, but yes, if you were able to, to commit to these potential savings, you kind of are exactly where your budget was when you set it.
Yeah.
If you, if you still wanna go all in, though, um, you know, my recommendation is the twenty twenty-two parks, it seems like you should go all in on all of those alternatives and just get those parks done. John mentioning coming back in, you know, tearing up some of the parks again, it seems like, make the commitment, do that. If you definitely wanna hit your budget, this is probably the place to try to do it, at, at the skate park. And then you'll just have to consider is the two hundred thousand dollars, you know, is, is that good? Or do you wanna, do you wanna, you know, hit that budget, or do you just wanna spend it and be all done with that, too, and, and get the full project?
I don't think skaters are gonna care about the concrete's color.
Right, yeah, there's some things here that, that potentially you can just, you can just get rid of, you know, as part of that. But the lighting is the big one. At the end of the day, it's that hundred and fifty thousand. Um, the other things are gonna be a little bit, a little bit less, like you're seeing. They're gonna be closer to this ten to twenty to thirty thousand dollar items that we might be able to value engineer out.
It's a twenty-year bond, right? So you're talking about a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty grand over twenty years. It's not a lot of money every year, you know, it's money well spent. We'll talk about it in a minute.
I do think the lighting would be a good thing to do, just to make it, it's dark a lot in Wisconsin, and just reality. If we were to take out the lighting, can we put conduit in to the lighting spots? So then, when we make the next improvement at Bakken Park or something? I'm just, uh, I would be in support of keeping the lighting, but if not, then maybe we can make it easier and not have to tear things up and have conduit laid to install the lighting later.
There, there could be some of that we could, we could consider, too. The thing is, it's on the outsides of the two sides, so they could, they can trench it, sometimes the board also, so. We can talk to the contractor a little bit about that. So what I'm hearing here tonight is, we should, and the reason we put next steps in here is because we knew both of them were over budget. We should go back to, um, Hamburg and discuss, or kinda give them more of a, hey, we're gonna start to proceed with contracts with the alternatives in it. And then on Bakken, we're gonna come back, we're gonna talk to the contractors some more, talk to Rick a little bit about how much conversation can we have and, and what can we craft prior to the, the award? You know, do you have to award it and then craft a change order right behind it on some of these cost savings? Just kinda finalize what we're showing here today, give you guys a little bit of time to think about it for a couple of weeks, come back and finalize it. But I will say in a couple of weeks for some of the supplies for some of this, it would be nice to have a decision for, for both contractors, so they can move forward on some of that.
Is there a way to check with the contractor that's doing Clark Street, too, on the streetlight, to see if different type of street light, rather than just the one that limits the amount of, um, lighting on the street? But maybe that gives a wider scope than of light.
So with the streetlights, the only thing I'm thinking about right now, I think it's a good, it's a good thought, is you're gonna want the streetlights on all night, but then are you going to turn the park off at a certain time? And do you want the ability to turn the park off at a certain time?
How is it, how would it currently be, like, would the lights automatically turn off at the park?
Yeah, they'd be set on a timer, and it's something that if, they're not gonna be on if nobody's there, they'll have to hit a button and it'll be on for a period of time, and they'll have to hit the button, just like this flashbang. So if nobody's using it, the lights will be off, and then they, they won't be allowed to come on between, when the park is not open. So it can, tend to be the, it's a.
Right, so that's gonna be the issue with, okay, let's try to use the streetlights. You're gonna want the streetlights on all night, but you're gonna want, after a certain park hours, you're gonna want the park to kind of be unlit. I mean, some of that just becomes a, having to monitor it all night, you know, you know.
I don't know.
Peace wise.
Don't you think, chief, you gonna be out there every night watching it?
Probably not.
So that, they might be, while it's a good thought, it might work, they might work against each other a little bit on that. The one thing we, it's, the other thought we thought about, and we haven't pursued this yet, is part of Clark and Grove, there is stripping this site, moving some, some earth, and they have a, they have a, they have a number in there that seems a little high to us right now. Maybe the Clark and, maybe we can pull that out of this contract, and the Clark and Grove contractor, who's already out there, stripping a bunch of stuff, and who also is gonna be bringing extra fill into Bakken Park to the south, maybe they could do all of it on, you know, all together, um, prior to them coming in. So there could be a way to save some money there also that we wanna approach with Clark and Grove. And we're having a pre-construction meeting with them later this week, and I was gonna bring that up and just see if they could give us some numbers for, for helping with that site.
Okay, that would be good, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, um, anything else on parks? Stay tuned, more to come. Uh, next up is reports from village officers. I don't know if Rick and Larry are committed elsewhere, right?
Yes, although Rick will be joining us for the closed session.
Okay.
But, um, I can say no report for them.
That's what I thought you were gonna say, thank you. Uh, then you're up again, Matt, right next to, around prioritization process.
Yes, uh, real quick here, um, I'll, I'll send the board, um, an email with the Word document for the last process. Everyone has, um, everything in case you wanna pull any, um, won't make you guys retype everything. If you wanna use something that you've used before, um, so I'll send that to you guys. And then if you could submit your individual priorities back to me by the fourteenth, so then I can get them compiled, and then the, the, the next step is for the board to just ask questions and clarifications and discuss the overall list that everyone compiles that's un-prioritized. It's just a, a chance to discuss and get clarifications from everybody, so that would happen at the next, at the next meeting, as long as I get everything right around the fourteenth. So, um, and Brittany and Chris, um, you, you, it doesn't have to be anything substantial, you can, you'll see the examples, and I think you've already, already have seen it, um, could be as simple as a sentence, could be as lengthy as a couple paragraphs, but what, whatever you'd like to submit. Um, gen- generally, um, board members submit anywhere between three and six. There's no magic number, you could submit ten different items for consideration, it's really up to, up to you.
Any questions for Matt? All right, thanks, Matt. Next up is communication, Melissa, business around, uh, first thing up is approval of vouchers. Any questions, comments with vouchers as presented?
I, I don't have a question about the vouchers, but can we, let's go back one, one moment on the prioritization. I forgot to mention that, um, I, I tried to track down our, and, and this goes to show that we should be taking a fresh look at mission and vision for the board. Um, we can also try to do that at the next, at the next meeting before we get too far into this process, but, um, doing a search of our files, I wasn't able to locate it, and I was, it also wasn't on our website, so it's a good reminder to do that the next time that we, or this time that we refresh that. So I'll work on tracking that down in our minutes and, and pass memos to bring that forward next time.
Scroll all the way down to the bottom. I think it's on the website. On the bottom, you gotta go scroll all the way down. I, that's where it was the last time I saw it.
Was that before we got the new website?
It was after it was on there.
After.
And Lisa thinks the same thing. So, just, where's, where's Waldo?
I didn't spend much time on it.
I'm pretty certain that's where it was, but it could've disappeared, so to, I don't know. Uh, vouchers, any questions on those?
I'll move to approve.
All right, thank you, Melissa, thank you, David. Uh, any questions? All right, having heard and done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained, motion carries? Correspondents, um, I think the board's seen several emails in favor of library being, uh, continue to be the number one priority. I think those all went out to, uh, the village board email address. Those are the only ones I saw this last week, fortunately. Chief, I haven't heard any more concerns, complaints about speeding, so I don't know if the, I, I think the efforts of the grants, the car, and, uh, some enthusiastic officers, as well as the signage and everything, have, have hopefully addressed that. Although I was running today and I saw somebody just about plow into somebody, bust in the back end at the railroad station, so. Um, it's, I don't know what, how to fix that. Yeah. Fortunately, it did not. Upcoming community events? We have a little thing called the Firement's Festival coming up. Uh, hot trot, all kinds of other fun things for several days in the community. Anybody have anything else?
Saturday is Padler time at, um, Glacial Drummond Community Garden from nine, nine-thirty to eleven AM.
Can I make them pull weeds?
Yeah. Story in the garden.
Oh, that.
Come listen to a little story.
That's not a plant, or that's not a weed. Um, okay, very good, any others? All right, I still can't get my kids to pull weeds. Then future agenda items, we'll have certainly some stuff out of plan, um, and in the other meetings that are coming up, too, that they're pretty active. Anything else you can think of, Matt?
Um, yes, we'll have a couple plan commission items, um, another coffee shop that's, uh, conditional use of approval in, in the Cottage Grove Commons facility, so that should be coming forward. And then, um, I've been teasing a couple of times, being a little bit, uh, I've been off on when it would be coming up, but Ellers should be here for the next meeting to do the first of two steps for the borrowing.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Matt. Uh, anything from anybody else? All right, um, all right, so at this time, I'd like to move that the village board goes into closed session. This closed session will establish a negotiation position regarding Deer Grove EMS and joint fire agreements. The Village Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five, parentheses one, parentheses ease, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or the conducting otherwise public, public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, with that, we do a roll call.
Falwick?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Stoa?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye. We are in closed session. We gotta have this, we gotta get Chris up on the other.